I had one thing.
Is it okay if we get a comment from Tim?
Of course. Nat was attended and also not attended. Did I send those comments to you, did he?
Yeah.
Okay, are there any other comments on the minutes?
No, no, no. Oh, no, he did not send me anything on the minutes.
Oh, bless me. He was, one of his names was spelled incorrectly as well.
I need to, I've got to figure out which one I'm doing, doing to Daniel wrong, and when word comes up with two different spellings.
Is it I A L?
It's I E L.
I E L. I'm gonna write that down.
Thank you for asking.
I was just gonna look up your text card. Any other comments on the minutes before Vicky makes her motion?
Okay, so make motion to approve the minutes as a member.
Do we have a second? From Rich Brown. All those in favor? I'll say aye. Close? None? I would like to, if the rest of the board is okay with this, I would like to move the agenda items around if perhaps we could talk about the zoning board adjustment member appointment first, and then we can, and then is there any other new business before the board? I do have, just to give out, we have an application for a site plan review. Okay. That just came in today, and they're pushing very hard since they can get it done. The second meeting next month will be within the 21 days or after the 21 days submission time. So I'm gonna give what they gave me to the board tonight, and I have not looked at it, I have not reviewed anything, so. Okay, well, I guess we can hold that off to new business at the end, but could we discuss the zoning board member appointment? So zoning board of adjustment, there are, I believe, three members are appointed by the select board, sorry, three more, planning board and three are appointed by, or two are appointed by the select board. We have two openings right now, but we have gentleman Aaron Mancuso, lives over actually right by you.
Yep.
Who would be willing to serve on the board, and I wanted to find out, does the board want to meet Mr. Mancuso, talk to him, just say you're on? What is the board's pleasure?
You know him, Nat?
Yep.
You're the only one, I guess, that knows him here.
The responsible thing is to chat with him.
I think we have to, because, I mean, I don't know if he's got an axe to grind, or, like, you know. Did he get denied by the zoning board, or?
No, he did not, he actually got approved, but.
Could be a free stater for all we know, yeah.
So, okay, so what I will do is I'll talk to him and try to set up time probably next meeting to have him come in, meet with the board. Okay, right. Do, do people typically submit anything when they, did he submit a package or? No, he did not. Really depends, you know, we're kind of desperate for members right now, so if you know anybody who would like to serve on the zoning board, we'd love to have volunteers.
What's the scope of responsibility?
Basically, if you look through the zoning board, there are special exceptions, and it's to look at those, and then also variance requests, which is basically, you know, get out jail free card.
They don't, they don't meet very often, do they?
They meet once a month.
Yeah, it's not too honors.
It's not.
It's not like the planning board.
Right, it's basically.
They don't get paid as much as the planning board.
Well, either. But you, you know, you have to be able to look at a issue and, you know, the special exceptions, there's 14 criteria in the zoning that have to be met, and you have to look and be able to judge those and not just say, yeah, I think that's all good. And then for variances, it also, there's five criteria that have to be met, and, you know, be able to look at that and be able to, unfortunately, sometimes say no to your neighbors and say, just not gonna happen.
Zoning board curious.
You know, it's really, really a positive thing to have somebody who would be liaison between the two boards. You're bringing firsthand knowledge about things that aren't working, and, you know, you do have to recuse yourself for one or the other, if we get a site plan that's also going, but you choose which one. And it's, it's a really positive thing when that happens.
If you're interested, I will bring you to the select board for their, because we have one opening for each board.
Oh, I thought it was two. Okay, I got you.
Oh, two openings, but one for each.
Gotcha.
Each board.
Yeah, because my understanding is that Bill Malcolm's been on forever, right? Just like all the other people are really new.
And we're gonna lose one.
Oh.
Yes. Helena Witty.
Oh, Helena Witty.
Yep, she is going to, she's expecting in June and feels that she just needs some time with everything else going on in her life to not have that extra responsibility, so.
I actually have a law course in zoning. Well, I learned that Euclidean zoning is not because of right angles like geometry, it's because of the president from Euclid, Ohio.
They have really good training materials through the, but there's now, I don't even know what they call them now, Office of State Planning, but you can do online training and stuff, so.
The public has, the public has a comment, if I may.
Sure.
Two comments, actually. One is, it would be a good, I would think it would be a good idea to post the need for zoning board members on the list serve to see if you can get more candidates.
Yeah, I do intend to do that also. Last time I did that, I got absolutely no response whatsoever.
That just means you have to do it more often. And my second comment is that John Stadler seems to find himself with nothing to do now that he's no longer chair of it.
I have asked him probably a half dozen times, and he has politely declined every single one. But last time he said maybe in a year, so.
Yeah, I've been talking to him for at least three months about it, too, so.
Okay, well, maybe we can, yeah, we'll see what happens. But that would be great if you could. Yep, absolutely. On the list serve. Okay, so we expect that maybe our next meeting, we'll see. I will try to schedule, again, without talking to him, I can't guarantee it. Okay. But I will get him to a meeting as soon as possible. Okay. So the other item on our agenda is continuation of the master plan housing chapter discussion, and I want to thank Vicky for putting together a compilation of our thoughts and both verbalized and maybe non-verbalized. But, no, seriously, from what we talked about last time, and Rich Brown has also provided some comments to what Vicky put together. So I guess we should continue our discussion on this. I think it would also be maybe good, the hubus to set a time deadline so that, you know, maybe we can have a discussion for an hour or so, and then allow a little bit of time to get the additional materials for this other application that David just mentioned. So with that.
So it's 11 after the hour.
Okay.
Yeah.
Clock's running.
So sometime, sometime around 10 past or a quarter past, we should be thinking about wrapping up our discussion on that. So with that in mind, I guess I would open it up to people in terms of comments on what we've got here, and Rich is certainly has a number of questions and whatnot, so why don't we, why don't we start?
Could we go like stepwise down from the draft that I did and just like talk about goal one first?
Sure.
Yeah, and just as a way of organizing.
Yes.
And I know everybody got riches, but for those that didn't send in comments, it'd be really good to hear about your goal one, and I think our goal is to try to get some, a draft of housing goals that we're willing to share with the public and get some feedback from them on, and it may well be, too, that we're gonna have these strategies, which I think they kind of define how we might get to that goal and give us, you know, so it's not as wide open. And I'm gonna be pretty fierce about if we've got, you know, in the weeds questions that are really good questions, but we need to just set them aside, those will be sussed out in the narrative or actually are recommended actions. And in a way, I don't want to get into actions until we've set up goals and strategies and see if the public responds to those. And to try to keep it just like more high in the air and not like, you know, digging a lot about our zoning ordinance that we might think needs to be changed. And that's definitely something that we'll be looking at, but in terms of specific details, probably we don't want to get into that right now. I mean, we could just go like this, dump some of our districts and uses and do something totally different if that serves us better in getting to what we want in our housing goals and, you know, strategies and how we're gonna get there. So that is like an option. So, so let's go on, I mean.
Vicky, I wonder.
We, is that, you know, I just want to try to get agreement around that, but yes.
Question I would say, I think it's a great set of goals. I think it covers the waterfront from what I'm thinking is, are there, are there any of the goals that, you know, people want to throw in at this point? I don't, I'm not feeling any urge to do that, but I think it's fair to ask that question upfront.
And it's fair to make sure that the public, if there's a goal that they see, I mean, we put some of our, well, we really want the housing stock to grow, but we want it to grow like this, you know, in, you know, is a strategy, because that's more of a defining thing rather than the big picture, what we see. So, yeah, and there may be more, but that's your feeling, everybody else, you know, let's just see if, if you think there should be another goal, let's save that to the end, and we'll say, oh, that's really, it could be, what you're saying is, yes, it's a brand new goal, or it's really meant by goal three, and how can we use your language in goal three to make it sound more like what you're thinking about instead of what I wrote? So, okay.
As far as goal one, I just wanted to say, John, I thought John Dantremont did a really good job on this.
Yeah, well, that's really good.
Yeah, he was great.
Did you want to do a little report because our public doesn't really know what, what he shared with you?
Right.
And why?
Yeah, I, I talked to him at the beginning of the week, and he said, he'd sent me something, and this, you know, he's obviously done some work on it, which is great, so, I mean, I don't want to read.
He's the principal.
He's the, yeah, he's the principal of the school. I don't want to read the whole thing.
No, I think, but what's the conclusion?
The conclusion is, basically, he says, so the safest conservative answer for you would be roughly no more than 10 to 15%.
Of what?
Adding students, no more than 10 to 15% of students to the school.
The base enrollment is around 190 to 200.
Yeah, he sent a, he sent a, and he actually sent a projection for twenty years.
Well, that, I think, is really interesting. I think also what's our takeaway, big picture, is they're using one of the classrooms as their administrative office, which they didn't used to do. And then beyond that, there's one additional classroom. So, and they allow bubble classes to have two classrooms.
And they have two bubble classes now, so they could have one more.
They could have one more bubble class. So I think that what we have is capacity for like 30 students, although that's kind of lumpy because we don't know.
Depends what grade, whether they're all of one grade.
Depends on how they're distributed.
Right.
But that was his, I guess that's the basic thing, you know, he, he said a lot of other things here, which was interesting, but.
I think it's really interesting. He's like the first guy who's revealed kind of like how he thinks about that kind of thing to us. It's very helpful.
And he was saying at the end here that if, if it was looking like the school is going to have a stable 15 to 25% increase from our current level, as administration, we would probably be asking for more physical space or thinking about how we might reconfigure the building to serve those numbers.
So is that 10, I didn't get like, over what timeframe is that percentage increase?
Well, I think that's just the capacity of the plant.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't be like an annual?
No. Where did you come up with the number of students? I guess I missed that.
Well, we happen to know.
Oh.
He gave us, yeah.
So, and.
That wasn't with your thing, was it?
Yeah, it was.
Oh, I didn't see that. Was, and is that 10 to 15% on the K through eight school population? Okay, all right, I just did the math. It's 209 to 218 students is.
See, here's the total.
That would be the upper limit.
The upper limit, yeah.
Of the 10%, 10 to 15%.
So, I'm, I've been paying attention to the school for about 30 years or so, and the story hasn't changed, essentially. In the late 80s, it was around 220, and it went down to 175. There's always about two classes that are bubbles that are, they split them. And there's usually, they usually aim for low twenties in each classroom, but sometimes it's high teens, and so what you have, I mean, the problem with classes and teachers is they, they only come in unit, whole units.
Half a teacher, yeah.
Exactly, exactly, and so I see this is completely consistent with everything I've known for the last 30 years about the school. And I think that's really stable.
Yep.
And my impression is that line school doesn't like to have big classes. I mean, some schools have like 30 kids, they don't want to do that.
If it gets, it gets, starts getting up to 27, 28, they start splitting.
And they split, yeah.
Okay, well, what you found out is really informative for our strategy, one point, you know, one dash one, that, you know, we're not gonna increase the housing stock unless it's consistent with the capacity of the school. So that kind of puts a limit on, you know, like what we think it is, and that, that is a strategy that some people might disagree with. So, but knowing what the capacity is now based on current, and I was thinking they can always kick the administrative offices to some other place before we start expanding the school, but that's really good to know.
What do we think that means in terms of housing?
Well, that's a.
It's a wild card.
It's a wild card.
It better not be that wild. That's what we're using to base it on.
Yes.
Understandably, but, you know, it's like, how many houses have kids? I mean, is that gonna be the same number here? My view is, is that this is a more, this is a very, is a magnet for families.
Exactly.
We're one of the only towns with a, you know, a school district that isn't losing population, and it's because our school is so highly valued by families in the area.
Jeff Valance used to say that he had in the, he had, I don't know, three, four families every year that were just waiting to get, trying to find a place to live in line, to get their kids in a line school.
It's a circle, though. It's because people are affluent and well-educated, that the school is then having good results. It's not, it's not just that the school is fantastic, it's because of all the support from the community and the protoplasm that they have coming in.
But plus, I think, because we pay, send the kids to either Hannover or Thetford, that's another huge draw.
Or St. Johnsbury.
It's a huge draw. You know, people, they just want their kids to come along because they have that choice.
So who was it that said four families?
Jeff Valance, he was the pre, the principal before.
Antrimont.
So is Antrimont now getting requests?
I don't know, I didn't ask.
Well, it'd be, I mean, he's the gatekeeper for the requests at least. That would give us some idea of what the backlog is, and presumably, you know, we could just pick some average of number of kids per family and try and figure out.
Every year, I usually know at least one family, you know, that I know of, another, that are saying, oh, man, we're trying to get to line, you know, we're trying to live.
But it is interesting, the minute they, the minute the kids are out, they're out too.
Yeah, and then the next, right.
Exactly.
Right.
I mean, I think there's another, another aspect. One of the things that we found is that in smaller units, single, single people tend to move into smaller units, or retired people tend to downsize into smaller units. Those don't generate.
Right, one bedroom certainly.
One bedroom certainly is not attractive to families, even a two-bedroom. And so what in developments with, with more houses, this is statewide, but there's about a sixth of a child per six units. So six units generates one, as many as one school kid. That's, I mean, I'm not saying that's gospel, that's really old information, but I think that's a trend that we're gonna have to figure out to enter that.
Six units of all sizes with a distribution of market.
Right, I mean, if you have, obviously, if you have a four-bedroom home, you're gonna have a lot of, you're almost certainly gonna have a lot of kids living there. But if you have smaller units, they're not as attractive to families, and so I'm not, I'm not gonna say, you know, I set a number, and I don't strongly believe that that number is accurate in 2024. But that's, that's something that, as we think about increasing the housing units, how big do we think they're gonna be? How will we estimate their effect on school population?
Right, and then we also have to estimate, which is hard, how many new houses are gonna be built, you know, how many new $800,000 dollar houses are gonna be built? How many kids, you know, it's, it's really hard to, you know.
Okay, so we have, we don't need to fill in the numbers today. So we have, we have a goal which talks about, you know, we want approximately so many houses by 2045. And then Rich asked, who's, how many should we say that is? And I would like to posit that we would fill in the X Xs by the Keys to the Valley because they're objective and they're looking at our regional fair share. And we may need to adjust that based on our strategy one, because it may be that it's gonna be a killer here if we can't accommodate those, that number of houses or whatever because of this limitation on our school. Yes.
Are you willing to have a comment from the public?
Sure.
Several comments, actually. It seems to me that the overarching goal should be to maintain the high quality of life in the town of Line. And with respect to housing, accommodating the slow organic growth that we've experienced over the last 20 years would be a good goal to have, a good overarching goal. And we can go to the census figures to see what the population growth has been. It's worked. We've accommodated those newcomers. They've made great additions to the community, and the same rate of growth in the future would make sense to me. Secondly, with respect to Keys to the, to the Valley, the fair share, our fair share shouldn't be driven at all by what's going on to the South of us. Lebanon has chosen to permit if not encourage development and growth, and as a consequence, their, their population has gone up. Same is true perhaps to a lesser extent in Hanover and White River. We don't, we shouldn't have to bear a share of that burden because we're not causing it. And I think that as long as we maintain our current land use regulations, we'll, we will get the slow organic growth that we've been getting. I don't think a major change is warranted at all. And I also think that a majority, a solid majority of people in town, I agree with that.
Well, it's, it's interesting to then look at our history here of growth in the student population or not, and, and look at that trend, because that's, that's kind of what's happening here. Whether or not that with the number of new homes that we have, I'm not, I'm not talking numbers, I don't want to get into the weeds, I just want to talk concepts, and like we can, we need to fine tune when we look at what that XX should be in that first goal. And, and maybe we can put a number in the strategy which is, you know, obviously, we've been, you know, growing our, and then what, what, with the housing stock and how that's been reflected in the enrollment projections. But that's also, that kind of nexus thing can be discussed in our narrative, as, you know, once we decide what, where we want to go and how, and how generally do we want to do that?
The, can I just say that I did some research on the numbers?
Yep.
Because your 11 really surprised me. The number for 2030, now I know we picked 2045, but that's only gonna be a larger number.
Right.
But the number from Keys to the Valley is 55.
I saw that.
Right, and the number from Upper Valley, Lake Sunapee, which is also based on the same census, which I think is 2010, was actually 98. So these are much, much bigger numbers than we've been throwing around.
Well, okay, so the, the growth that they say for the 55 is 2010 to 2030.
Right.
Right, so some of that's already happened, and so when I was looking at it, what I did was I subtracted what had already happened and then used, because I, I don't know where I found that, but I think the Regional Planning Commissioner or somebody had that, and then looked at the balance.
Ah, I see.
So that's, so.
So what had already happened?
Well, I don't, I don't have, I don't know, David provides that information to Keys to the Valley and to the Office of State Planning.
This is useful because, because we, in theory, can call that organic. You know, and, and that gives us some benchmark for what the delta has to be
Yes.
to, to reach these goals and thereby decide how feasible.
Yeah, so it was the last 14 years, how much have we?
I mean, on average, the three to five new houses a year. About, you know, with some years, there's a lot less, some years, five is being, you know, the highest. I don't think that we've had over five.
So an average of four, maybe?
I say an average of three, a lot of years is, you know.
So that's three times.
So that would be?
Be 42.
Yeah, so 42 of the 55, and two of them are supposed to be.
Where'd you get three times what?
14 years, from 2010 to now. 2010 to now, because they were looking at it from 2010 to 2030, so.
Yep.
No, 20 to, 20 to 40?
Well, I had, well, I looked at Keys to the Valley, 2010 to 2030, they said 55, more units were needed.
I see.
And of that, 53 should be owner occupied and two should be renter occupied, and I don't think we want to mess with that. What we care about is the dwelling units. And so if we're doing 14 times three, that's 42, and that's how I got the 11.
To 2030?
Right.
Right, the next six years.
Right, so we need 11 more to meet that goal, so we're kind of on target in not a bad way. And what I thought was that that's pretty fair. They looked at our capacity, you know, where we are and don't have water and sewer. Hanover's got like 3,000 that they're supposed to have between, you know, in that 20 years. So we're not doing so badly here. I don't think that's totally off base.
Take three a year, and you're looking out to 2030, you still have six years.
It's 18.
18.
Yep.
And so you're over what they're, over the 55.
I do think those.
Just normal growth.
Right.
This is, organic is, is fine, but I think we also need to pay a little bit of attention to the demographic changes that are, happen in growth that we have, we have a population that's aging.
Yep.
And we'd like to probably age in place.
Yep.
And we have lost our capacity to house those middle income workforce folks that always previously were a part of Lime's heart and soul. that always previously were a part of Lime's heart and soul element. So I think it's, it's fine to say what we've doing, been doing is, is perfect and organic.
Well, I'm not saying it is, but, but, no. All right, so you're drifting into our second goal. So, so let's just look at what we have for goal one. So how do we set? So we've talked about number of units, but it sounds like Keys to the Valley, isn't that so far off? Do we wanna set intermediate targets? No. Maybe we wanna show a trend line, but I would say let's not because we don't have control of it anyway.
Right.
But just to put the town on track to, you know, say, and I saw a 2040 number from Keys to the Valley also, but I couldn't find it. I don't know if they've taken that off and just.
142.
Was it 142?
I believe. I'm just looking it up now.
I found it someplace. So, yeah, what, what year do we wanna set this at? I mean, it's all.
Right.
You know, it's down the road, so.
Well, the thing is, we don't really change things that often.
Right.
So.
So it definitely shouldn't be 2030 because we won't be done when it's still 20.
No, I know. I think it's like 20 years or something like that.
Yeah, you need to be able to smooth out market forces and interest rates and all that stuff.
Yeah.
And just like not have to notice that.
So what would you suggest for a year?
Oh, I, I think that 2040 is a.
2040?
I, I do like it.
Okay, 2040 then. So we'll go for that and, all right, so we've got that.
I'm sorry, there is no, there is no 2040.
There used to be though, and I, I can follow up with Olivia because there used to be, we used that.
Where I got that?
No, they, they changed it. They changed, they changed the whatever's online because there used to be a 2040.
So, I mean. Was there anything wrong with 2045? If there's a 2045, I mean, that's 20 years from now.
Just trying to find the number.
I mean, I think it's.
That's fine too. Absolutely.
It is okay as well.
Okay, so we'll.
Leave it at 2040.
Why don't I, I'll call the Regional Planning Commission and say what happened to your 2040 stuff? We can't find it online at all. And we know it was there. I remember seeing it also, but I couldn't find it.
So, so Ricky, I am gonna say, I mean, I found this, this table here. This is from the 300 page, Keys to the Valley. It's page 69.
Yep.
And it says, in 2025, Lime has 52, 98 in 2030, which is, I think, the number that I heard somebody say. 2035, 128, and 2040, 145.
145 in 2040.
So this is not, this is not Keys to the Valley. This is.
This is from that 300 page, Keys to the Valley report, so.
Well.
That's why I took a picture of it.
That's, I think that's from, I mean, it's funny because they say they use the Keys to the Valley. But that's from the Lake Sunapee, the Upper Valley, Lake Sunapee table. And they say they use the Keys to the Valley methodology. But if you actually look at the Keys to the Valley projections, they're different. That's the, that's the funny part. Because at 2030, they're saying 98. And here at 2030, they're saying 55. So that's what I found, a factor of two.
I'll, I'll give Olivia a call and just say, what are you using and why?
Right.
And why, or why the discrepancy between 55 and 98?
I do know that Hanover used this one because that number jives. The number you get from Hanover here is 781. And the Hanover target was like 800, so.
So, so this is a good process. Question, Ricky, you didn't wanna get too far down into the weeds.
I know, I understand.
And we're very capable of doing that.
I think it's okay to have actual data points to help us talk about the goal.
I think it helps me.
Well, a little, a little.
But I wonder how, how seriously we take the nu, the numbers. Cause I think, we talked about the last, you were hearing that, we talked, I think they had the population of Lime off by a lot. I mean, they didn't really, they didn't really look at Lime closely.
I think I saw a 2021 estimate just recently, which was only 1,600 and change.
Yeah, we lost population is what they said.
So you had said, you had said we were 18.
Yes.
And I don't think that's true. I think we're low.
The 2020 census was 1,740, can't remember if it's 45 or 46.
1,700, yeah. I think we've increased it.
No, no, that, that, I think that that is more right, but I, I feel like the 2020 census is like very inaccurate. I think of a lot of people who had reasons not to fill it out and didn't want to and it was COVID and, you know, you saw. I mean, you saw it firsthand. But it's, it is the best we have to work with. And I think that our own town clerk has a better idea about where our population is than the US Census. So.
But I just meant that, you know, these numbers that they're throwing out, you know, may not be something that we wanna really take as gospel just because, you know, they didn't really look at Lime that closely.
Well, I, I actually think that they did a pretty nice job for Lime. And I think what we wanna look at then is, you know, David's organic growth, what's been happening anyway. And, and somewhere between the two is, is probably the right number for us. But I think that that number needs not to be unattainable. I mean, it's not gonna be like, oh my gosh, you know, density's gonna double and this is crazy. But, and it needs to say that we do need to accommodate growth. And, and so that people know that that's what we think.
So I, I did find 1,750 ish's, repeatable through many sources. The interesting number for me is 1,100 in 1970. So 50, 50 years, 700 is the growth, so. But, but if you go back to, you know, the town that went downhill.
Right, it was over 2,000.
Exactly.
So, yeah.
Well, it was 900, in 1930, the fireplace was 900.
It went down to 2,000, yeah.
Yeah, but people had eight kids then too, probably.
Yeah, there were all, yeah, how many families were actually here? How many households compared to?
There were fewer households.
Fewer households and bigger, bigger, yeah, yeah. Yeah, all right, so let me call Olivia just to see what she's working with these days, why there's, you know, crazy numbers. And we can talk about the XX. In terms of strategies for, okay, so, and our goal is actually, what we're trying to do is support the quality. So we're not overburdening the school. We're not overburdening the town government. It's, you know, businesses and our personal lives. I mean, that is what our vision is. And so we want a strategy one. We're gonna increase it in, you know, consistent with the capacity of the school system. That's number one because we all get unhappy when our taxes go up more than they already do. Two, we talk about accessory dwelling units as a way of increasing the number of housing units in an organic way because that could be accommodated in a structure, a, a unit behind your house. And there are many ways that that could be done. And, you know, we're not having subdivisions for.
Side unit, did, did the legislation from the state allow two ADUs per house? Is that passed?
It was passed by the House, but I'm not sure it was passed by the Senate.
It hasn't been passed by the Senate yet.
Cause that's an interesting.
It's very interesting. And if it happens, that's gonna be interesting.
They were gonna make one parking space.
Right, reduce the parking requirement.
Right, but we still have the septic situation.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
And they, they, in the discussion, you know, municipal association.
There's many ways. We don't have to get into things because of the natural limits of our.
Right, 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 right.
Infrastructure.
And dimensional controls will not limit the ability to meet our goal. It's been the housing stock. So we're saying, we're gonna take a look at the zoning and make sure that the zoning isn't in our way. And I think Rich has put a lot, okay, go ahead.
Um, I, I had a, a question about that because I, I don't know whether we wanna put it in there or not, but the dimensional controls may, may need to be adjusted. Is that what we're saying or?
And I, and for me, being the author, I specifically did not put conservation overlay districts as a way of, of trying, you know, changing those to meet our goals. For me, it's dimensional controls. Maybe allowing bigger footprints, maybe allowing smaller lots. That's me, but, but, you know, we're a group here, so if you wanna call out anything else in the zoning ordinance, we can talk about it.
What does conservation overlay, overlays?
These steep slopes and wetlands and agricultural soil and all that.
But what does that mean as a strategy?
It means in our zoning that, that really dictates how a lot is developed because you're supposed to stay out of those conservation overlay districts.
Right.
And so that is looking at the characteristics of your lot. You know, if it's too steep or too wet, you don't put your house there. The dimensional controls talk about how big your lot would be, how tall your house would be, how much of the lot does it cover? That type of thing. I'm willing to like take a look at and see if our zoning is, is too restrictive. But for me, we have a green infrastructure, the natural, you know, the, the water and, you know, soils. And we need to be respectful of those things when we do development, in my way of thinking.
Right, so, you know, John, I guess, used to talk about this tension where if we changed some sort of dimensional control and it gets shot out over across everything that it applies to, it may be out of our control. And one of the things that was mentioned as a strategy in, in particular, I guess, for creating housing, just not, not necessarily ADUs, is to create a, a housing district and then adjust the zoning within that district. So that, so that it doesn't apply broadly in the town.
Yep.
You know, that seemed to make some sense, particularly since, I don't know, you know, there are a couple of big parcels on Route 10 that, you know, could be developed. One being the pond view and the other being the, that Barker property.
Yeah, it's a commercial.
Where D'Artagnan's was.
Oh, that, yeah, the, Dr. College Highway.
85 Dr. College Highway.
Yeah, probably.
All the condos.
They're all, they're all built out.
That's built out.
Can't do more, anything more there.
Oh, they are all.
Frida, Frida Swan said, 10 pounds of potatoes in a five pound sack.
They've got, and.
How many condos are in there now?
You know what? I don't, I don't wanna go down there. You can, but it, it's fully developed with the density.
There was like 300 acres.
Yeah, but they've got a lot of conservation easement.
Ah, okay.
Huge Brook runs along the back and everything on the other side.
Right.
Yep, yep.
So, or they could be all built up, built out in like six or seven condos? Okay, yeah.
Oh, no, it's more than that. I mean, it's 20.
Nevermind, 20 you know, okay.
Yeah, I mean, the interesting thing, can a condo have an ADU? So, you know, or, you know.
Saw that discussion.
Yeah, right, so, and that's a big thing on the planning panelists are about that and whether or not, you know.
The town doesn't get involved.
The homeowners association, you know, the documents that govern the condominium association, you know, often would not allow that to happen.
In Hanover, they're discussing.
No, 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 it's across the state.
Across the state.
Some people.
There's a planning, there's a planning lists or where people pose questions.
It's, and it's, it's fascinating to see all, you know, all that, all that talk back and forth.
Yeah.
So I guess what we could be doing in order to do this would be to create a different zoning district that would accommodate. Now, would that be, so what we have is new housing will be located in village districts to reinforce the sense of community and to allow for efficient delivery of municipal services. So are you suggesting maybe a new village district? Or do you wanna just allow, you know, the focused housing somewhere other than the village districts?
Yeah, I mean, I think the village district has some limitations in terms of hosting new housing. And that's why I was sort of eyeing the idea of a new district. That plus, I mean, the village district is nice and cohesive so you can make changes in zoning in the village district without them affecting everything. But, but putting a similar kind of district, I mean, after all, in Hanover, a lot of the workforce housing is not around a village or around a central core. Now, they have a different situation there, right?
Well, yeah, actually, they are. I mean, that's the, the dial housing, a medical center drive. Their next housing project is gonna be on Greensboro Road where there's water and sewer. And then the senior housing downtown.
Well, how much, how much of, then it's, then it's Lebanon housing. How much of the Lebanon housing contributes to, say, Hitchcock?
Oh, I don't know anything about that. What I'm talking about is.
There's that huge thing on.
Oh, Emerson Gardens?
Yeah, the, 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 the Mount Support Grove. And, and they're, and they're not, they're existing out in the middle of nowhere, but they're close to Hitchcock, which makes them make sense. Similarly, being at the other end of Route 10 towards Hanover makes some sense for people working in, in the medical center.
That's a commercial district and so.
And that is the commercial district.
So we can see what's allowed, I mean, not just saying, not just the villages, but village and commercial.
But the commercial district is actually quite small.
And that was the second point I wanted to make is that we could consider modest modifications to the boundaries of some of these districts.
Yeah, we started looking at that. We, we actually walked that one a couple of years ago, but we didn't really finish looking at the commercial district.
Okay, so I don't think that anybody's like, so what we might posit here is new housing will be located in village areas and.
What, what, what page?
I'm on Golf Four. Cause Golf Four was like talking about location. Where, where do we wanna fit? You know, there's gonna be the subdivision and filling in of vacant lots across the rural area. But that's not where we want to focus our efforts. So this goal could be modified to be located in the village areas and our commercial district. And, but I need to change it because the reasons why you put it in the village areas is different than the commercial. And so I'm gonna say something about, because it's easy access to jobs and.
I guess I would take some exception to that because I thought the whole idea.
It is your neighborhood.
It is my neighborhood. But I just thought that the whole sense of this commercial district was because the town.
Wants tax fees.
Wanted, wanted some ability to have commercial.
Yes.
So if we're chopping the commercial.
Well, let's, let's think about.
If we're adding housing to the commercial, then we're.
It's juice. I mean, we can make some planned develop kind of thingies about the commercial.
Of course, it's been sitting there for 30 years and never, nobody's ever even thought about using it. It's interesting.
But it, it hasn't really been commercial for 30 years.
Since the zoning, since we've had.
Well, it was.
Well, it was never, it wasn't commercial.
It wasn't commercial. The commercial was like 10 year.
It wasn't more commercial when, that Dr. College Highway. There's a restaurant, there were offices. Randy Mudge still has his office there.
There was a gas station.
Maxfield was.
That wasn't part of the commercial.
That wasn't part of the district, yeah.
But, yeah, so.
GDT was in there, had, you know, 100 and some employees.
But I thought we made that, well, when zoning was first enacted, wasn't that the commercial district?
That wasn't then, there then. It, it, that was all, and, and David Roby probably has nightmares about that. But it was all the planning board dealing with subdivision that dealt with that development.
That was all before zoning came in in 89.
Right.
And that whole thing was done before that.
Yeah, Bane built that, isn't it, right?
Yep, so that used to be a mixed use development, which I don't think anybody had a problem with that. I mean, having another restaurant was, was hunky dory and people liked having their offices there. And, yeah, so, does anybody have a problem with that kind of development in your neighborhood, like mixed use like that?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know. I mean, I guess the, the concern I have with the housing is, you know, Route 10 is a
Reformed highway.
Limited access highway. And so putting housing out there, you know, is, is, is hard to do. I mean, there's a fixed number of driveways and, you know, I don't think the quality of life for people that live north of the village is improved by, you know, all of a sudden necessitating the speed, the speed limit having to be dropped because we increased the density in that area.
Okay, well, let's. Okay, well, uh, let's think about that, I mean, um, everyone's good with putting, focusing our efforts at housing in the village districts, yes.
I mean, I, I still don't know what's wrong with looking into that, I mean.
Now, what about Green Mountain Studio, they're not, that's not the village, right?
Yes, it is.
It is, okay, and then we have the sand pit, Brett, that's a possibility. So those are the two main areas, right, that are already in the village district, yeah.
I mean, there's the area, isn't there an area behind Nancy Grandin's place and the school?
You know, um, let's not get in the weeds with this discussion, we had that study of the Lime Common District, and I didn't bring that with me. I think everyone, um, is that, it's on the website.
We're gonna play in more.
So you should look at that because it does look at, um, the, the possibility for growth. David did a lot of work on that, the maps are great, you can see exactly where there is opportunity and, um, you know, and it's, it's.
It's a, well, one common build-out.
And it uses a lot of like, um, real info, best we know, information about like soils on lots and so got down into nitty-gritty about is this really feasible? And, you know, so their growth potential there, um.
So, Vicky, I do wanna say about that study, um, yes, there was a lot of really good work done to analyze those lots. I think the number that came out, the number of living units that could be produced there is unrealistic because I think they were all seven hundred fifty square feet, um, which, sure, people can live in seven hundred fifty square feet. The other critical.
Okay, can I just say, you're talking about downsizing a lot in here, and so seven hundred and fifty then too small?
Let me finish my.
Okay, well, just, you know, what do you mean by downsized then?
The, uh, I, I don't think we should put too much credence into that, into the number that came out because it posits, uh, two problems. One is it poses very, very small units uniformly across, which, um, may or may not be interesting to the people we're speaking about. The second is a build-out analysis is designed to say what's the maximum that an ordinance will permit. If, this, and this is the big if, if it becomes economically feasible. So if we had our downtown in New York City, how many units? I mean, in, in New York City, it would be very attractive to pack a whole lot of units in there. And so that would be economically sensible to make all those units. I mean, a big portion of build-out analysis is whether it's economically sensible. I don't think it is practical to suggest that people could put six units on one of the lots um, and on the Lime Common, six more units on the Lime Common. I don't think the peak, the current owners would be interested in doing that, I don't see.
We can't do anything about that, the current owners are gonna move away or die, and that we all, we know for sure. And, uh, so it's not always going to be like that. Our job is to make sure that there are opportunities for that kind of growth to occur. And, um, you know, I really hope that I'm not around when any of those beautiful homes get torn down. But I believe that, you know, Brett may be using his space efficiently, I think some of the other places are underutilized because there are two people living in a big house and not say that there's anything wrong with that, but, um, you know, there's plenty of opportunity there. And if that's where we wanna have our growth, then that's where we have to make it easier for people to do. And, um, I, I'm not sold on sprawl, I'm not sold on our, um, people going on our dirt roads. You know, more people going on our dirt roads because they're bad, um, there are a lot of places where the roads are terrible. And so we've gotta play to our strengths, what we have is, you know, good access on Route ten and we've got beautiful little villages where people wanna live. So, um, the whole thing about the commercial district, I, I just wanna get back to like, well, where else can we put them? And I'm not gonna say that, um, I think our build-out analysis was a really good effort and you could poke holes in it, whatever, but it's a way that we can be informed about the growth that we could accommodate in our town at that location. And it's kind of a shame we didn't finish the commercial district, uh, uh, study because that would have been useful now. But, um, in here is, um, you know, just in, within our goals and strategies, we talk about using, um, mixed-use development or, you know, we, we have it in our zoning, it's called plan development, but it's, it's pretty prescribed and, um, so it could be like our plan development with rule changes, you know, so let's just talk about not use that technical term which is what is in our zoning, but call it mixed-use development, some other way where we could mix, um, business uses and, um, single, you know, and, and units, you know, in one lot or one building, which we can't really do now, the one building mix-up, which we should be doing. Um, there's no reason why, what, you know, anything wrong with the country store and an apartment upstairs or with Martha DeBolt's office and apartment, you know, that kind of thing, there's nothing wrong with that, but, and people should be allowed to do that, so. But to have mixed use in our villages, you know, but should we allow that some other place? And the commercial is, you know, kind of like what I think, kind of the next logical, um, and so what if the Purcells were allowed to do like a mixed-use type of development there where there's already curb cut, there's a lot of backland? You know, I'm kinda looking at Rich, would that be the worst thing in the world, um, in terms of trying to accommodate our housing? And, I mean, you could say, yes, that would be a terrible thing, um, that's fine, say that, but.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I don't know, but, um.
Yeah, something like the, um, proposal, I didn't think was really appropriate to have like the nursery right there on Route ten? Just like, uh, cause that looked too much like, to me, like a strip development? You know, and, but I, you know, something that's more mixed use and, and hidden, um, I don't think is so bad.
At one point, Crossroads would wanted to put in some faculty houses up near Shoe Strap on that corner, it used to be the sand pit.
Right.
So, I don't, I mean, they're, they've got so much on their plate, they're probably not thinking about that.
No, I don't know, but.
But it would be nice to make that, you know, because I think that's still, that's the rural district, right, that corner.
Right at the corner.
And it, and it's, you know, it's like, was it three acre minimums?
Five acres.
Well, depends, it's, it's on Shoe Strap or.
Right, three acres on a thousand feet of road.
So it's a three acre minimum, so that kind of works against it.
Right.
So, I, I'm, just as I walk around town, I think about what would be okay to have happen and a house right there on Shoe Strap wouldn't be bad.
And, Vicky, we used to talk about not, the approach to town, to town, you know, not making the approach to Lime all build-up and all that.
Yep.
So it would be nice if we could somehow put stuff back away from Route ten, so it's not seen as much.
I totally agree, our, our, you know, we do have a land use chapter in our current master plan which talks about the Route ten corridor and how we wanna keep it fast-flowing so that it's not a drag to have to drive to Hanover or, or point south. You know, and I think that's a huge resource for us all because we all use that. Um, so we don't wanna burden it with more traffic and I, I think, you know, but for the drop-off and pickup times, crossroads isn't such a big deal.
Well, they just opened that second entrance, too, which was a big barrier for a long time, the state wouldn't let them do it until later, third lane.
Yep.
So I don't know what changed, but that's helped, that helps a lot.
Yep, yep, and it was nice that they didn't need a, a signal there because it would be, I think, you know, just really nice if we could keep it so we don't have, you know, traffic signals, um, north of Hanover.
But having, you know, another eighty-five Dartmouth College Highway on the other side of the road.
Well, you know, I, I, that's why I'm, you know, which is the neighbor.
I think if it's screened off and it's got, you know, a single entrance and.
Yeah, well, we did.
There are ways that that, that could happen.
We did look at, at like a, a layout, um, at the, at the Pondview and there's a lot of land up in back there where you could put housing and, and that seemed to be like, oh, good, we won't have them impacting, um, a lot of the traffic, you know, further up into the village. And, um, you know, it'd be very desirable because it's close to employment and all that. It's not a village, um, there, um, it, it would be a new neighborhood, so. So what I'm gonna do is put here that, um, something about the, the commercial district being a possible place for, um, new housing and it was, you know, in the mixed use. And we'll see how that, you know, while we see it on paper, let's tear it apart.
And, and, the other point would be, correct, consider modest adjustments to the village zoning borders.
Um, yeah, well, uh, that is like a strategy of how you would accommodate housing in the zonings, uh, yeah, so.
Strategy and tactics and goals and objectives, I, like.
Yep, well, yep, yep, well, I wanna, you know, I wanna, I don't wanna have too many goals because our goal isn't to change the zoning district. The goal is to have.
Exactly, exactly.
Housing in the, in the village district and it may be that in order to do that, we need to change the zoning district boundary, but, okay.
Is the Purcell property the southeastern tip of the commercial district?
I believe so.
Southeast, no, it's the northeastern.
No?
No, it's south.
Southeast, but it, it's not all in it, in this commercial district either, is it?
Right, not the, the property itself is split.
I think they have fifty.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it doesn't look like it on the map of the.
The, the commercial district on the east side ends, um, right after, um, Pondview Apartments, but their property extends further south.
Right.
Uh, okay, so that's a, so that, that might be another thing to, to extend the commercial district a bit so that that entire piece of property was.
But David, at one point, you said it was wet in there.
It is fairly wet in the.
It's a bit steep, too.
As you go back, but.
You'd be surprised.
The magic.
As you, as you go back from the road, um, the, to the south, that part of the lot, you'll notice is below grade and it is fairly wet, once you get behind Pondview.
There's the whole pond.
Well, the pond is also very wet, um, but there's a stream that comes down that feeds a pond, that comes in just to the north of Pondview and I used to live there, that's why I, I, I walked that whole area.
Is it wet enough to be a wetlands?
I'm not sure that, because it's forested, I don't think it would be considered wetlands, um.
Are there vernal pools?
Well, there could be, um, but then once you get behind Pondview, it goes up fairly steep.
So out of those fifty acres, there's not, there's certainly not.
There's not a whole lot.
There's not a whole lot left.
What can they solar raise on part of that?
David, I remember you saying, I think at one point, you know, we were talking about, of how many curb cuts are allowed on Route ten there? It wasn't, didn't you say there was a limit at some point?
Yes, there is a limit, each, each property has a.
It has a certain number, yeah.
Uh, but it, it varies by, you know, some people, um, were happy with what the, the state gave them, they were fine, other people were unhappy and asked for more, um, you would have to go back through the.
Let me total, yeah.
The, um, the, the state has a set of maps and it shows where each one of those, um, curb cuts you, that's your whole map series that go through.
Okay, well, that's, that's kind of weedish, guys.
Yeah.
So, um, if we, uh, kind of get through one.
Can I ask a question about one, just, um, you were, in the strategies of the, the dimensional controls and, you know, one and three, or two and three, I'm sorry. I was wondering about conversions, um, looking at, um, reviewing the, the rules on conversions.
Yep.
Um, you know, a simple thing of having a building that doesn't have sewer or water, only allowing one dwelling unit in it, you know, that type of rule. That could.
Isn't that a, that's a.
That, that's like.
This is conversion to an ADU.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a recommendation, like change that.
Conversion to a dwelling, I believe.
Okay, yep.
But it would be an accessory, accessory dwelling, dwelling unit or?
Um, I see, the zoning defines them separately, it's conversions and accessory dwelling units, they're, they're two separate things. So I've always treated them as separate.
So, so what's a conversion?
A conversion would be where you have an existing building and you, um, put in, um, multiple units within that you.
Consider, um.
Well, Morty Bailey's.
John Biglow's barn, it used to be Sandy Kess, Kelsey.
Yep.
He, he can't do anything with it because there's no.
Water or septic.
There's electric, but there's no water.
Right.
So you, you could have put in one, uh, you can convert that to one dwelling unit.
And five years later, you can add.
And five years later, you could.
But he, or he can put in water now and then just wait five years.
So, so he can't, he couldn't convert that to, to five units.
Right.
Or the big yellow barn on the.
Because why?
Cut for growth.
Because a conversion, if it doesn't, if it's not served by sewer and, and water, basically sanitation.
By municipal.
Not by any, um, you are only allowed to convert to one dwelling unit.
Even if they can show that they, they have a septic plant to hold.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't it?
Right, but they can do it after five years.
Right, they have to do one.
Why, that makes it unattractive, why?
Right, that's why I'm suggesting.
It's one of the things that we.
So conversions and accessory dwelling units could be the way to have organic growth because what we wanna see is the same structures, but they might have people living in them instead of, you know, barn parties.
Or being empty, or, or formerly cows and horses thirty to fifty years ago.
And we've got a lot of big old barns.
Yeah, I just, and just, I would throw that out to the board to consider.
Yeah, no, I thought of that, too.
I think that's a good idea.
I remember they did a barn conversion in Etna, or not, actually it was Hanover towards Etna.
Yeah, that was David Farr.
Yeah. Yeah, might have been David.
Yeah, yeah, there's four units in there now.
And it worked out pretty nicely.
Oh, they're beautiful, except that the ceilings are really high and hard, and the places are hard to, hard to heat. But, but, yeah, and the basement is bone dry, it's unbelievable, it's beautiful.
David Farr did it, so.
Yeah, yeah, it was really good, um, but that definitely is, and Hanover has that same, uh, kind of like, let's keep our barns and give them a new use and so they allow that to happen in, in barns or, uh, buildings like that. But ju, we don't have to have a barn, it could be some other structure. Okay, so add that in to, um, our strategy.
Under goal one?
In goal one with, uh, with.
Inversions.
I'm gonna say strategy one, two, I'll add it in there, cause just like accessory.
accessory dwelling units and conversions, yeah.
Yep. Okay, we're, we're like basically at the witching hour, folks.
Can I say something about conversion before you leave the setting? The reason the zoning ordinance says that you, uh, you have to wait five years after putting in water and electricity is that we didn't want to, uh, permit some, a developer coming along and building a big building and almost immediately ask for a conversion. So the, 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 the answer to, uh, converting the, the barns in the town of Lime, I think, an answer would be to limit conversions as they are now, plus with respect to, uh, older buildings as long as they are more than, for the life. Our, our barns are a hundred years old, old from, so, or maybe, or maybe it's fifty years old. Anyway, just, but we, we don't, what I, what I'm groping toward is we, we don't want to have a zoning ordinance that encourages developers to build large buildings, knowing that they can come back in a year or two and put in six apartments.
And that, and that, that was the justification, okay.
Right. I'll, I'll give you one other, uh, piece of history. The reason we have a commercial district is because those who were drafting the zoning ordinance assumed that every town had to have a commercial district.
Why?
Not that it made, not that it made sense there necessarily, although I suppose it does.
Aren't there additional commercial districts that have? Aren't there additional commercial districts out?
No, no, we only have.
Dorchester Roads.
No, no, village, no, a skiway district, and then the two villages can have limited commercial use, and then we have our commercial district.
So the, the map in the back is a little hard to understand.
And you have the, you know, Lime Common District and the Lime Center District, they're mixed use.
So does that mean they're commercial also?
There's limited commercial, yes.
Mixed, yeah.
You can have restaurants, hotels.
That was one other thing, and that is.
Who's this? And this, why are they not the same?
Because the map ship is, um, they're, they are two different.
Oh, they're, it's turned a hundred eighty, or ninety degrees?
Yeah, it's very hard to.
So this is East Lime?
Yeah, it's very hard to, a black and white map at that scale to.
I see.
Create hatches that.
Go ahead, David. Robbie?
Is he here?
Yeah. But, but, here I am. The, the sand pit is in the, in the Lime, Lime Common District. Phoebe was, or Hibi was asking about that.
Oh, there's a, there's another old sand pit, which was when they built Route 10 down below Schuylkill Road. That's what I was talking about.
Oh, okay, understood, sorry.
No worries.
So is that the one that was on crossroads?
Yeah.
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 Yeah, and that's no longer possible now.
Yeah, police crossroads put pretty much most of that property in conservation.
Well, it was, it was funny to discuss you about how we had all this precious, and you're like, it's an old sand pit, the Route 10.
Well, it was also wet because they'd taken out all the sand.
There's a beaver bog in there now.
Yeah.
So we have exceeded the.
Yeah, I think we should think about wrapping up.
Okay. I will.
This is good.
I will make some changes based on what we talked about. Some of Rich's comments I'm gonna throw into. These are questions we need to respond to, but aren't gonna be strategies or goals.
Right.
Okay?
Exactly, I think that's fair.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, and then Tim's stuff, I mean, I think we should keep this, it's really, really important. I wonder if there's anybody who wants to take a look at the growth or not of our school population, which we have the history now, and, and look at the number of building permits for homes that David has issued and see if there's any kind of correlation. Maybe, maybe not.
What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna, I've, nope, to, to pull the number of dwelling units I've issued permits for since two thousand and ten to present. And just, you know, year by year.
Yep, yep.
It'll take me a little while because they're all in separate, every year is a separate database. So it's a little too rich one, are they really? Okay.
And I wanted to just finish, Vicky, by saying I think five and six are fine and non-controversial.
Was that a part of this?
Yeah, 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 exactly, yeah.
Yeah, he said it there.
Just, just, we did get through, we could say we got through all of them, it didn't get consensus.
So, so David, you, you're gonna look at from two thousand and ten.
Yep.
To, so the last fourteen years.
Yeah.
And, and look at how many building, building permits for new residences.
Yes. Could I ask you also, while you're there, make a report of all the zoning permits for each year? I would find that useful for other residences. I'm gonna put that aside, is, because that's, I think, you know, doing a, a single report, that's just gonna take me, you know, well, it strikes me, I mean, I. You're gonna do, yeah, okay. You're gonna do it, I, you know, all the data and then you pluck out the residences. Planning board is my only function. I understand. And so I have a limited amount of time, so I, I will do as much as I can.
So are you asking me that request as a private citizen?
I actually have an outstanding request with David to bore that information, but yes.
I mean, I'm just, I, I'm, I'm not sure I'm aware of what the, the interest in the board is in the number of zoning permits that he's issued.
So zoning permits, even, but other than how, other than new housing, you grew everything.
Well.
Like, is somebody else.
Garage or?
So, yes, it, it is as a private citizen, I, uh, look at other things that the town does and I, and so I was hopeful that if David was gonna go back to all four.
That it might coincide with the, the work he's doing, yeah, okay.
So, I, I guess I. You've said, you've said what you're gonna do, thank you very much. Yeah, and I will try to get to it as soon as I can, but it's. I appreciate that. It is unfortunately not as higher priority as, you know, processing people's applications and.
How many do you issue every year about?
I track about eighty a year.
That's a lot.
And so some of those are, you know, zoning board hearings, and sometimes they don't go any further or, you know, but, you know, I, I run about, you know, eighty records a year that I'm.
And would you say like a, a certain percentage of those are solar installation?
Last few years, a large number of them are solar.
So like a, like a tenth or a twenty percent would be solar?
Yep.
Yeah.
And those are pretty straightforward, right?
It depends on what they're doing.
Depends on where they're located.
You know, it, if it's a ground mounted system, it takes the exact same amount of time as any other structure. If it's a roof mounted.
Yeah, and you turn, yeah, and you have to turn down the guy by nap there, right?
Yes, Aaron and Kusso.
He didn't let him do what he wanted to do.
Well, he had zoning board approval finally, but.
Oh, he did?
He did, he said it.
So I think that's a good segue to some information that you were gonna provide us on a new application.
I have a new, it's a, um, stick one and pass it on.
Well, we haven't done a site plan in a while.
Well, and, um, this person is aggressive at getting things out and wanting things done, so.
Well, honestly, if there isn't enough data to make a.
And I have been very clear to him.
I'm sorry that I'm gonna like call foul play, but.
No, no, all I'm doing is, you know, he, under the board was meeting tight and asked that I get this. And, um, there.
What's that mean?
I, again, I have not even read this.
Do we know where six fifty one?
It is, um, what used to be breakfast on the Connecticut.
Okay.
Oh, really?
Oh, it's, it's that site or it's next to it?
It is that site.
Oh.
Which is now housing, house, home, yeah.
Yeah, there's two houses, right, there's, oh, well, there's the main.
They're, they're two separate.
And there's another house.
Yeah, but that's just sound of it, you're, so that's.
Well, no, there's, I think there's two.
Well, there's a house and.
Separate house and the end.
The end, yes.
Right.
Although I believe they're connected by a, um, cause way, I'm pretty sure they are.
Well, I think the house is down by the river, and, anyway, yeah.
So, yeah, in my new role here, I'm, I'm wondering, uh, do you feel that this is mostly complete or?
I have not had a chance to look at it, this was given to me this afternoon.
Yep.
And I, this, he's talking about some conversions, we've had a little bit of talk in the past, he wanted to convert the barn to two units, it has no water, no septic. So I told him that's not possible, I don't know if he, you know, this new revision of it, he may not have, or he may just included it and said, well, I wanna do it anyway, and.
So it could be one unit, two units, five years.
Yes. And then I think he wants to add a pad with what he's calling a tiny home. It's a trailer, it's a camping trailer. And using that as a dwelling unit to rent out.
So what about septic?
So would that be year round rental or is it just a seasonal?
Seasonal. Because he doesn't believe anyone really would want to live in a camper in the winter.
That's right.
Oh, you'd be surprised.
So would he have a composting toilet in there?
So it's, it's gonna be tied into the existing main.
I, I have, I'm supposed to receive a septic plan, I've been in contact with a designer. I charge a fee for reviewed septic plans and this designer tries very hard to slip them in without paying the fee. And I keep having to tell him that he has to pay before I'm gonna even look at it.
Yeah, they're taking no laundry.
All right, so we officially cannot talk about this because it hasn't been worn. So you, when's the hearing gonna be?
Um, it'll be the second meeting of next month. So it's through the twenty, if it was on the second, I don't know, yeah.
Okay, so this will not be on next, next.
Beyond twenty third.
So I'm not gonna be here many twenty thirds, so I will forward my comment to you. And we don't, and this is the whole plan set right here?
He was supposed to drop off a full size set of drawings. He was very unhappy when I asked him for ten copies to give, you know, to, to the board. And I have not heard back from him on that, but he was very insistent that he wanted me to bring this to the board tonight, so. Okay, I did, but.
Okay, it says this application includes ten sets of proposed site plan with a map to scale of one inch to forty inches for the entire project area, so.
Yeah, I have not seen that map.
No.
And.
Right.
So.
So he, he actually didn't. Ten copies. Well, he saved one more.
Okay, well, David, I, I will wanna get together with you to.
Yeah.
In advance of our meeting to be able to be a little bit more educated on what we need to do.
Absolutely, and it very well may be that. I, I haven't looked at this, I haven't had a chance to go through it and, and fully figure out everything, which I will do before the meeting.
So which meeting, David, the next, one after the next?
May twenty third.
Not the next.
Not the next meeting, but the week, the meeting after.
Right. So he's gonna, and presumably by then we'll have a complete application.
If not, then I would consider it incomplete and.
Postpone it.
But he's got substantially a week to, to pull everything together. I, I might, I have to look at the, the dates again, but he's gotta get it real soon because the complete application has to be submitted twenty-one days in advance. Right. And if he doesn't have the, the full application.
Next week.
He keeps trying to hand me little bits and pieces of stuff and have me hold on to it for him. And I don't, I'm, that is just unrealistic to have, to have me track everything.
Yeah, that's, that's not reasonable, I don't think, so. I don't know what, what you think, Vicky, but it, it seems to me that the applicant should be able to provide a full.
We, we charge extra for deferred submittals plus a little bit more, and, and if they came in.
Seriously, you have such a thing?
Yes, yes.
I'm gonna add that to my.
And then the other is that if, if they have to be inserted, we, the whole package goes back. Okay, you insert that in there, restaple it, and so we have it, you know, we, we don't accept.
Harder.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, I'll tell you, it, it takes.
Takes a lot of time.
It takes a very large amount of time to.
I mean, there's a reason they do that, is so they don't have to do it.
Right, yeah, a lot of times people say, well, I'll send you everything by email. It's like, well, no, I'm not making the copies for you and only leaving them and.
Yeah, that's great, yeah.
But you should get digital versions.
I do, I, I absolutely do, but.
That shouldn't be the sole copy.
And do you put the digital version online so the public can access the digital version of the submission?
I think during COVID, I, we haven't had this many recently, but.
I mean, I think it's, you know, for people who might be interested, like the public that we have tonight, it'd be nice for just, you know, there to be an online.
It becomes, it, our website is very cumbersome for doing that, it takes, again, you. Do a, you know, spend an hour trying to get everything to come out the way you want it to look.
Right, well, that can get charged in the application fee because, you know, I think we have an obligation to let people know what's happening.
Yeah.
Could I comment on this?
Sure.
I like, I think you're, you're absolutely right, it should go on the web. But more importantly, it seems essential to me that, that to save David's time and to save the board's time, David should insist on a complete application before he brings it to the board. And, and don't let them push you around, David. In fact, I gather that you, you can't be pushed around.
I, I try very hard to accommodate as best as possible. We need to kind of meet people halfway, we have almost everything and I can get it, you know, like tonight, the board was here. It saves me in postage.
Well, it shouldn't save you in postage, the applicant should be paying the postage.
Well, they, they pay a hundred and fifty dollar fee for the site plan review.
Well, is, that's probably not enough when you count the ads and your time and postage for.
Who sets the fees?
Our select board members should be.
And then I can, you know, all I need to do is go to the select board and say, you need to up this fee and.
Yeah.
Hasn't been, hasn't been modified since twenty, two thousand.
No, it has not been modified, and there's been some fees that I have fixed.
Yeah, no, but all.
Like the, the notice fees.
Notice fees, yeah.
And they're gonna have to go up again because postage is going up again, another eight, nine cents that, you know.
Yeah, seven, it's gonna have to seventy-three cents, I think, first.
It's sixty-four right now, so you have nine cents. And assuming that.
Kind of paid the joint's salary.
But anyway, um, the other, you know, like I said, I'm trying to play a balancing act, give this to the board so you have as much time as possible to read and try to get the, you know, the applicant to see the board before.
Yeah, so I would, I'm gonna be reviewing this in advance, so I'll forward my questions to you in advance and maybe, you know, if we can expedite, if you have questions, send them to David so we could send the applicant one list of questions that then he might be, or that if this person, I don't know, they might be able to, to respond to in advance.
Do we think that the complete plans will be completed before the next meeting, so?
I'm hoping.
The full size of plans?
I'm hoping to have them in the next day or so, hopefully tomorrow.
Yeah, because the P S has them in twenty-one days before.
Do we need David to send them to us or can we just wait till the next meeting to collect them?
Um, if I get them in the next day or so, I will actually put them in the mail to everybody.
Okay.
And bigger than this, right, because I, I can't even read.
That's, they're, yeah, they're, they should be the full size. He was complaining about the cost of copying them.
Oh, so that, you know, that's, that's one of the developer tricks, is to make it so small that the reviewing board can't tell what it is. And, and then everyone doesn't wanna set, seem stupid, like, I can't read this or need new prescriptions, so, yeah, we need to have.
The, the other tactic is on the interior plans, is to enlarge a fuzzy JPEG. So they'll put color on it so you can't see what the things are.
Right, right.
Well, the first, for those of you haven't gone through a site plan review, the very first thing you do is go through and make sure that they have submitted everything, that their application is complete. If not, and if you can't read something and something is just not clear, then you say that it has not been submitted correctly and kick it back to them.
Yeah.
Right, because we have that whole checklist.
Right, there's a whole checklist to go through.
Yeah, maybe we should get John here to do the reading of the checklist.
I'll ask him. He was really good at that. Well, on that, I think, would, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'd, I'd love to make a motion, if I was Jay Smith, I would be, I saw him today, I'd be packing up my briefcase right now and getting ready to go. Oh, oh, we've gotten to do that, okay, he's sort of packed up.
Okay.
He's ready to go.
Well, I think we're good for tonight, thank you, thank you, everybody.